Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of November 12, 2025. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak; members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times; insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. Abru?
Here.
Avilas?
Presente.
Ayala? Hanks?
Here.
Botcher? Brennan? Brewer?
Here.
Brooks Powers?
Present.
Gavan? Carr? De La Rosa?
Here.
Dinowitz?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Feliz?
Here.
Gennaro?
Here.
Gutierrez? Hanif?
Here.
Hanks? Holden?
Here.
Hudson?
Present.
Joseph?
Present.
Krishnan?
Here.
Lee? Lewis?
Here, sorry.
Present.
Lee, okay. Lewis?
Present.
Sorry. Marmarado?
Present.
Marte?
Present.
Milly?
Present.
Menon?
Here.
Murano?
Here!
Moya?
Here. Here.
Narcisse, thank you. Narcisse?
Present.
Nurse?
Present.
Ose?
Here.
Palladino?
Here.
Powers? Wrestler?
Here.
Riley?
Present.
Salam?
Present.
Salamanca?
Present.
Sanchez?
Here.
Botcher?
Here.
Schulman?
Here.
Stevens? Ung?
Present.
Vernikov? Williams?
Present.
One? Zhuang?
Here.
Ariola?
Present.
One? Sorry.
Present.
Farias?
Present.
Speaker Adams?
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Michael Waldron, Senior Pastor of First Corinthian Baptist Church, which is located at 1912 Adam Clayton Powell Jr. Boulevard in Manhattan.
Let's bow our heads and a word of prayer. God, we stand in gratitude today for this day, a day, oh God, in which you remind us of the sufficiency of your grace and the ever-present of your mercy. God, we stand at a time where the wounded soul of our country and even this city groans for ethical leadership, oh God. Let this body be such. Remind this body, oh God, that we are in a season where we have to put people over politics and community over chaos. Remind this body, oh God, that we are in a moment where we cannot overlook those who are marginalized and even ostracized in this city, for now is a time where we must take seriously the words of your prophet, where we do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with you. God, in this season, continue to raise up leaders in the midst of political and social upheaval. Raise leaders, oh God, who are able to communicate and speak truth to power, but also those who are in power to remember the moral conscience and compass of our country and even this city. God, guide this body, and they may be lights in the midst of darkness, and they will continue to bring joy, where there may be despair and sadness through their policies and their legislation, and most of all, oh God, bring peace where there is unnecessary pressure from DC. God, we thank you, and we honor you on this amazing day. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Yusuf Salam to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Mike, as we like to call you, Pastor Michael Waldron Jr., for those powerful words, those powerful heartfelt words. You know, Pastor Mike is, he runs a powerfully dynamic revival every single Sunday in the Village of Harlem. And if you haven't had the opportunity to experience it, I encourage everyone to actually come to FCBC, and if you can't get there, then definitely check it out online. Your message reminds us that service is not simply an obligation, it's a calling. As public servants, we are entrusted with the duty to better the lives of the people who call our city home. Today, as we begin our work, let us carry forward the spirit of hope Pastor Waldron spoke of. Let us remember those who are struggling, those who have been unheard, those who suffer in silence. Our compassion, our willingness to listen, our commitment to act can make a real difference in their lives. We are here to make decisions that shape the future of our communities. That responsibility demands not only our intellect, but our diligence, but also our empathy and our open hearts. So as we move into today's stated meeting, may we be guided by a shared purpose to serve with integrity, to uplift those in need, and to keep striving to make our city the very best it can be. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and I would like to thank again Pastor Michael Waldron for being here today, and I make a motion for the unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon the record.
Thank you. We will now ask Councilmember Sandy Nurse for the adoption of minutes.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of October 29, 2025 be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
EMs 191 through 194, vetoes of intro numbers 982A, 984A, 1248B, and 1372.
Refer to committee as indicated on the agenda.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
EMs 195 and 196, reports from the public advocate and controller.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
Thank you. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to start by acknowledging the loss of firefighter Patrick Brady, who died last Sunday in the line of duty. Firefighter Brady served our city as a member of New York's bravest for 11 years. New Yorkers will remember firefighter Brady for his bravery and dedication to our city. My heart is with his family, colleagues, and loved ones as they navigate their immense loss. I also want to acknowledge the death of Saleh Abdur Rahman, a 23-year veteran paramedic and former Marine who devoted his life to serving others. EMS workers and paramedics are essential to the safety of New Yorkers, and my heart is with his loved ones and FDNY family during this very difficult time. November is Puerto Rican History Heritage Month. Guapa! I want to honor the many contributions and accomplishments of our Puerto Rican communities who helped shape our city into what it is today. November is also Native American Heritage Month. When we uplift the history and cultures of indigenous peoples, I want to recognize that we are currently on the homeland of the Lenape. As a city and country, we must commit to meeting the needs of our indigenous communities and confronting the disparities they continue to face. I want to acknowledge November is National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. This disease affects more than 6 million Americans. It's critical that we recognize them in all families and caregivers who support their well-being. Yesterday was Veterans Day, and I thank all of our veterans for their widespread contributions to our country. My father, my father-in-law, and my husband all served in the United States Air Force, so this is a personally important day for my family and for the many families of veterans. November 19th is World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims. When we remember the victims of traffic violence, we lose too many residents to preventable traffic crashes each year, which underscores the importance of the work ahead to make our city's streets safer for pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, and all road users. On November 20th, our nation will observe Trans Day of Remembrance, which honors those who have, who we have lost to anti-trans violence. It also marks the end of Trans Awareness Week, which we highlight the visibility, experiences, and ongoing challenges facing trans communities. As a city, we remain focused on supporting and uplifting all LGBTQIA+ New Yorkers. Finally, a very happy birthday to Councilmembers Kevin Riley and Keith Powers, who share a birthday on the 16th. Look at them, look at them, it's just ridiculous. And Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, who will celebrate on the 21st. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. One LIC Neighborhood Plan in Councilmember Julie Wynn's district is the fifth neighborhood rezoning to be approved by the council over the last two years, and the largest in over two decades. It will rezone approximately 54 blocks in Long Island City, Queens, to facilitate the creation of nearly 15,000 new homes, including 4,350 affordable homes through the mapping of MIH and the development of publicly-owned sites. The plan will also deliver 3.8 million square feet of commercial, community facility, and light industrial space. Through the council's direct negotiating role in the land use process, the One LIC Neighborhood Plan will be accompanied by historic community investments in Long Island, for the Long Island City Neighborhood, including major funding to create new public schools, support local public housing developments, open space, and waterfront esplanade access, transportation improvements, and new and renovated parks. I want to thank Councilmember One for her leadership, members of the public who participated in the many months of planning workshops and meetings to make their voices heard, our planning and land use team, and the Department of City Planning for their collective work on this historic plan. 7801 Queens Boulevard rezoning will facilitate the development of a new 13-story mixed-use development with approximately 314 homes, 79 of which will be permanently affordable under MIH Option 1 and ground-floor commercial and community facility space in Councilmember Shaker Krishnan's district. The council will be modifying this application to remove neighboring active industrial businesses from the rezoning area. AAMUP follow-up, a text amendment to the Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan passed by the council this past May to modify the non-residential zoning incentive to limit a portion of the incentive area to light industrial, arts, and selected community facility uses for seven blocks within the AAMUP rezoning in Councilmember Crystal Hudson's district. Lastly, two applications in Councilmember Justin Brennan's district. 58 Nixon Court rezoning will facilitate the development of a new eight-story mixed-use building with 19 homes, between four and six of which will be permanently affordable under MIH and ground-floor retail space. 464 Ubington Court rezoning will facilitate the development of a new eight-story residential building with 40 homes, 10 of which will be permanently affordable under MIH Option 1. We'll also be voting on the following finance items. Introduction 748, sponsored by Councilmember David Carr, would establish a real property tax exemption for Cold War veterans who are honorably discharged or released. 15% of the assessed value of the residential property would be exempt, up to $48,000. Cold War veterans who were disabled due to their service would be eligible for an additional exception, up to $160,000. Introduction 1410, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brennan, would authorize an increase in annual expenditures for seven business, business improvement districts. Introduction 1427, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan, would establish the Coney Island Business Improvement District. Introduction 1428, sponsored by, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan, would authorize additional services for the Lincoln Square bid and authorize a change in the method of assessment upon which the district charge is based. Pre-considered resolution by Councilmember Brennan would establish a new partial 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for a 20-story building in Councilmember Keith Powers' district. Pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brennan would establish a new partial 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for two buildings consisting of 83 units in Councilmember Rafael Salamanca's district. Today, we will also vote on the following resolutions. You ready? You ready? Pre-considered resolution sponsored by myself and Majority Leader Farias declaring January 15th as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Day in the City of New York in recognition of our sorority's enduring commitment to service and scholarship and its positive impact on families and communities across the world. Pre-considered resolution, also sponsored by myself, declaring the first Monday of November as Black Solidarity Day in the City of New York. Dr. Carlos Russell, a leading activist, created the first Black Solidarity Day on November 3rd, 1969 in support of black businesses. We thank our staff member Regina Paul. Introduction 1250A, sponsored by Councilmember David Carr, would require every community board, borough board, or advisory body to publish its bylaws on its own or on other city-owned websites. They would also be required to update published bylaws no later than two weeks after making changes to them. We thank our staff member Jahari Menelik Frazier. Introduction 1308A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would reform many of the city's business licensing laws, merging the electronics store and electronics or home appliance service dealer licenses. It would also remove licensing requirements for individual locksmiths and manufacturers of locks. We thank our staff member Sarah Swain. Introduction 1193A, sponsored by Councilmember Yusuf Salam, would require home improvement contractors to disclose to owners which, if any, permits are required to perform their work. It would also require the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection and the Department of Buildings to conduct outreach and education campaigns to raise awareness of these new requirements and a list of contractors who have performed work without the required permits. We thank our staff member Luciano Hamal. Introduction 1123B, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would establish rules for a containerization program, authorizing the Department of Sanitation to impose an annual fee for costs related to the installation and maintenance of on-street containers for trash, recycling, and organic waste. The fee would be capped at $55 per unit and only be imposed on buildings with 10 or more units that have received an on-street container from DSNY. The fee would be waived for Mitchellama Buildings, Buildings owned by Housing Development Fund corporations, 100% affordable buildings, and buildings where at least half of the units are rent-regulated. We thank our staff member Morgan Barrett. Introduction 1408A, sponsored by, by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, would require the Commissioner of the Department of Social Services, in collaboration with the Commissioner of the Department of Parks and Recreation or any other relevant city agency, to conduct a study to analyze Hart Island's capacity for future public burials. The agencies would be required to develop recommendations, share them with the mayor and the council, post them online, and implement any changes to procedures. We thank our staff members Amita Kilowan and Elliot Heisler. And Introduction 79A, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler, would require the Department of Transportation to install pedestrian lighting fixtures on at least 300 commercial corridors per, per year. We thank our staff members Theodore Miller and Mark Chen. Thank you for your attention, colleagues. Now I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Carr, followed by Brewer, then Salam.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the two pieces of legislation we're voting on today that are prime sponsored in my name. I'll start with Introduction 1250A, which is, I think, basic transparency bill. Community boards, borough boards, and other advisory boards have to post their bylaws online and any subsequent changes. I think it's a basic expectation that members of the public and new members of these institutions should have the same level of knowledge about the rules that govern those bodies as those who have been there for a long time. We have many community board members who have served for decades, and I think this puts everyone on an even-level playing field. And I thank Chair Wrestler and the Speaker for their support of this particular legislation, and Jurassic gonopathy, and, and our new committee council for their support of this legislation and helping us through to the finish line. I also want to talk about Intro 740A, which is going to finally close a major loophole in the veterans' benefits that we afford New Yorkers. Cold War veterans have been left out of our property tax exemption system for far too long. We're the only locality in the state that has yet to opt in, and that changes today. We always say thank you to our vets on Veterans Day, and this is a real meaningful way to say thank you to those who are willing to give up their lives in service of our country. And I want to thank our Chairs, Justin Brennan for his support, our Chair Bob Holden of the Veterans Committee, longtime champion of this legislation, my predecessor in, in Staten Island in holding this bill, Joe Borelli, for his work in introducing it in 2018, and the entire Common Sense Caucus, for whom this has long been an issue of importance, and our colleagues on BNT, and of course, the Speaker for making it a priority in this year's budget negotiations. So critical and important. And I want to thank the Finance Division team, Richard Lee, Emre Adev, Nick Cannell, and Brian Sarfo, Delara Dimnaku, and Andrew Wilber for their work, as well as my Chief of Staff Giuseppe DiZario, and Justin Belucy, and of course Jahari Frazier from the GovOps Committee on Intro 1250A. I urge all my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Salam, then Hudson.
Thank you. I just want to mention Lincoln Square, Special District. It's really run by many, for many years by a woman, Monica Blum, who's done a great job. ABC moved down to Hudson Square. Now I'm stuck trying to deal with their 2.4 acres and trying to get affordable housing. But their, that ABC was the background for the bid in terms of getting commercial rent that would then go to the bid. So they have come up with, I think, a fair way of working with a new way of getting assessments, residential and commercial. I just want to thank them for the creativity because they produce amazing beauty in the area, obviously, sanitation, and safety. So thank you to Monica Blum and her staff, and thank you for considering this bill today.
Recognizing Councilmember Salam, followed by Hudson, then Krishnan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Majority Leader. Colleagues, today I urge you to support Intro 1193A. This bill protects New Yorkers, New York homeowners, from being misled or harmed by contractors who perform work without proper limit, proper permits. It ensures that before any work begins, contractors must clearly disclose which permits are required, who is responsible for obtaining them, and how residents can verify that information through city databases. And beyond enforcement, it requires our agencies to conduct public education and outreach, providing multilingual materials and accessible tools to New Yorkers, so that New Yorkers, rather, can make informed decisions before they sign any contract. This legislation is also about durability, sustainability, and long-term affordability. When work is done by licensed professionals and expected properly, it lasts longer. It meets environmental standards, and it lowers maintenance costs in the long run. Safer, sustainable homes mean stronger neighborhoods, and that's what this bill delivers. This is common sense pro-safety and pro-accountability measures that has earned the supermajority support in the council. And so I want to thank council members, all the council members who've signed on for supporting this bill. I also want to recognize my Director of my Budget and our Legislative Affairs, he wears two hats, Mufasa Hussein, whose dedication and expertise brought this bill to life. Together, we are ensuring that New Yorkers' homes are not only safe today, but built to last for tomorrow. I urge my colleagues to vote yes on Intro 1193A. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Krishnan, then One.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. For far too long, New Yorkers have had to see and smell mountains of trash bags that fill our streets and sidewalks on trash day, and to put up with the rats that come with them. Intro 1123, also known as the Removing Animals From the Trash or Rat Act, takes a critical step in modernizing our city's outdated waste management system, which will result in cleaner streets throughout the city. This bill allows the Department of Sanitation to place stationary on-street containers for residential waste across the five boroughs. It expands on the successful pilots in Manhattan Community District 9 and Brooklyn Community District 2, and brings the program citywide, with an option for medium-sized buildings to use on-street containers or wheelie bins, and a requirement for large buildings to containerize their waste using the on-street bins. I'm especially proud that through negotiations on this bill, we secured carve-outs for low and middle-income homeowners and strong worker protections, including training for building superintendents and porters. Containerization is a proven strategy to reduce rodent populations and improve public health, and combining this sort of containerization with the city's composting program, we're creating cleaner neighborhoods that are far less susceptible to rats. And lastly, I'd like to thank Sanitation Commissioner Javier Lohan and his Chief of Staff Rebecca Kriegman, as well as former Sanitation Commissioner and current Police Commissioner Jessica Tisch, and her Chief of Staff Ryan Marola, for their leadership and vision. The District 35 Rat Task Force for their advocacy, and Morgan Barrett and CJ Murray from Central Staff, as well as Andrew Wright and Elica Ruentan on my team, for the diligent work throughout this process, and also a big thanks to Sanitation Committee Chair Shauna Breu. Together, we're saying goodbye to the era of piles of trash on the sidewalk, and hello to the cleaner, more modern city New Yorkers deserve. I urge my colleagues to vote yes on Intro 1123. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Krishnan, followed by One, then Menon, and Wrestler.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Doing nothing in a housing crisis is not an option. Jackson Heist and Elmhurst and across Queens, we have seen rents rising to historic highs, while wages for working families have remained stagnant, forcing too many longtime residents to the brink of displacement. When we build housing, we have to do so in a way that meets the need of our community. The deal we are voting on today demonstrates the development can be done differently, anchored in affordability, community partnership, and accountability. I'm so proud that we are passing the historic 7801 Queens Boulevard rezoning project. It shows how development in New York City can serve the public good, and I wanted to share just a few key highlights of the project and why I'm so proud of it. The project we are providing for Elmhurst today will guarantee affordable housing. With 314 total apartments, approximately 79 permanently affordable, and affordable to Elmhurst at 55% of AMI. On top of that, it matters the community spaces we bring in when we bring in housing to. And here, we have a historic win of a 15,000-square-foot community space that includes the first-ever community swimming pool for our district. It will offer, through Common Point, free and low-cost swim lessons, lifeguard training, locker rooms, classrooms, and multipurpose community rooms. We're grateful to Common Point for managing this facility, because they also have their social services and workforce development hub right down the street. As the Chair of the Parks Committee, open space is also incredibly important to me. With this project, we have 5,000 square feet of publicly-accessible open space, the first of its kind on Queens Boulevard, and it's also going to be done with union labor for the building with 32BJ involved. From day one, I've made clear that any rezoning in our district must deliver real affordability and protect our working-class immigrant families with community spaces that strengthen our community. That's why I'm proud we are approving a project today in Elmhurst that transforms what is a bank parking lot right now into desperately needed affordable housing, a community pool, and much-needed space. Thank you. Thank you to Apex Common Point, Council Land Use, and my staff, Chanel Martinez and Greg Clark, for assisting this project to the finish line, and thank you, Speaker Adams, for your leadership in helping us get to this point. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Wan, followed by Menon, then Ressler.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader, for yes, and thank you, Speaker Adams. Today, I am voting yes on the One Long Island City Neighborhood Plan, and I encourage all of my colleagues to also vote yes, because this project brings us one step closer to a connected and integrated Long Island City. Over the last three decades, the city has allowed for developers to dictate what is built in our neighborhood, breaking fiscal, bringing fiscal barriers, and the critical, critical issues that have separated my neighborhood into Hunter's Point, Core Square, as well as Queensbridge Houses. But over the past two years, thousands of my neighbors have come together to envision a different future. We've lived through four failed projects, but through this fifth one, and through our advocacy, persistent community engagement, and disciplined negotiations, we have secured a historic investment of nearly $2 billion to Long Island City to fund a connected waterfront, the restoration of Queensbridge Baby Park, and expanded public space underneath the Queensborough Bridge, as well as the ramps, over one thousand three hundred schools, new school seats, sewage and plumbing infrastructure, significant NYCHA investments of over $200 million for Queensbridge Houses, and so much more, all that is long overdue. Finally, through this project, we will become One Long Island City to integrate current and future residents in all corners of this neighborhood. We started this process two years ago, conducting extensive public engagement that included twenty-one large public events, two surveys, fourteen hundred mailers, presentations to community boards, multiple hearings, as well as thousands of public comments and testimonies. We also canvassed eight thousand doors at Queensbridge Houses over the course of several months to include voices from all residents. And now, we are happy to announce that this project will bring a total of fourteen thousand seven hundred units of new housing, as well as four thousand three hundred fifty units of affordable housing, making it the largest neighborhood rezoning in city history, as well as affordable housing expansion in the last two decades of New York City. So I implore you to please vote yes, and we are really excited to see this project through. And we know that this is not the end, but we will continue the work to make sure that these commitments will continue to be held accountable through our Community Oversight Committee, which will track these implementations. Thank you so much.
Recognizing Councilmember Menon, followed by Ressler.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm thrilled that my bill, Intro thirteen oh eight, is being voted on today. This omnibus legislation represents a comprehensive effort to modernize the city's small business licensing framework to meet the needs of our 21st century economy. It removes many outdated laws, and it updates others to address longstanding consumer concerns, ensuring that our regulatory system works better for both small businesses and for the public at large. This bill eliminates fees for duplicate licenses, it removes surety bond requirements for certain license types, it consolidates electronic service dealer licenses, among several other important reforms. These updates will reduce unnecessary red tape, streamline compliance, and allow small businesses to operate more efficiently without burdensome fees or duplicative processes. At the same time, the bill strengthens consumer protections by improving the ability of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to receive and address complaints across many, many licensing categories. Intro thirteen oh eight simplifies small business requirements, it enhances accountability, and it ensures fair, effective oversight that benefits consumers, small businesses, and the agency alike. I want to thank Speaker Adrienne Adams for her great leadership in advancing this legislation and always protecting the needs of small businesses, as well as bill drafters Nick Wodowski and Sarah Swain for their tremendous work, and I want to thank on my team Jonathan Shutt, Brandon Jordan, Mercedes Anderson, and Jack LaBelle for their efforts. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Ressler.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. I firstly just want to take a moment to congratulate Councilmembers Wan and Williams on these two rezonings, the two largest rezonings that the city has passed in decades that will add nearly thirty thousand units of housing to Queens. These are remarkable accomplishments, and they were not easy, and I just think you both deserve an enormous amount of credit for getting them over the finish line. I am really grateful that we have the opportunity to vote today on Intro seventy-nine, which will add more lighting to sidewalks across New York City. I think we would all agree that it's scary to walk down a dark street, and yet, too many of the streets, commercial corridors in our communities, are dark. And we push the Department of Transportation to brighten them up, and it, nothing happens, or they'll study it, which takes a year, and then maybe two years after that, they might add some lighting, but frankly, it's inadequate. This legislation requires DOT to get their act together and install new lighting on mixed-use corridors for three hundred blocks every single year. This will require DOT to seriously get to work to make our community safer. Adding lighting is an evidence-based approach to improving safety in our community. It's worked in NYCHA developments across the city of New York, it can work on our commercial corridors, it's time that we light, light up our neighborhoods, light up our sidewalks. DOT is very careful and rigorous and about the regulations for lighting up the streets, but most New Yorkers aren't driving, we're walking, and we need safe sidewalks. It's good for our neighborhood businesses, it's, it's great to take a stroll in the evening, it's great for our safety most of all. And I'm really grateful to Speaker Adams for helping to support this legislation, and I really want to thank the committee councils for the Transportation Infrastructure Committee for their support as well, and my staff Molly Haley and Neeb Mooney for their great help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intros eleven ninety-three and thirteen oh eight A, eleven ninety-three A and thirteen oh eight A, home improvement contractors and business licensing requirements.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Intro seven forty A, property tax exemption.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intros fourteen ten and fourteen twenty-eight, business improvement districts.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU four thirty-one and reso eleven thirty-seven, and pre-considered LU four thirty-two and reso eleven thirty-eight, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro fourteen oh eight A, Hart Island.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, Intro twelve fifty A, board bylaws.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU four zero five and reso eleven thirty-nine through LU four zero eight and reso eleven forty-two, fifty-eight Nixon Court and four sixty-four Ovington Avenue rezonings.
Coupled on general orders.
LU's four zero nine through four twenty-five, various applications.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section one nine seventy of the New York City Charter.
LU, LU four twenty-eight and reso eleven forty-three, Special Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management, Intro eleven twenty-three B, On-Street Refuse Containers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro seventy-nine A, Pedestrian Lighting Fixtures.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU three seventy-three and reso eleven forty-four, LU three ninety-two and reso eleven fifty, Long Island City Neighborhood Plan.
Coupled on general orders.
LU three ninety-eight and reso eleven fifty-one, and LU three ninety-nine and reso eleven fifty-two, seventy-eight oh one Queens Boulevard rezoning.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the Clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Just shout out to Elsie Soto and I on all.
Thank you. Feliz.
I on all.
Thank you. Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, we are taking a big step forward in transforming trash collection in New York. Intro eleven twenty-three will bring on-street containerization to large residential buildings citywide. It is a rare opportunity to truly change for the better what New York looks like and feels like on the ground. Soon enough, gone will be the days of smelly trash bags piled up on the street, instead replaced by clean and enclosed Empire bins. In the West Harlem Pilot Program, we have already seen cleaner streets and reduced rat sightings. With this vote, we are drawing a hard line between the old New York of black trash bags and the modern city we expect to be. This will be a monument to win for sanitation, public health, and sightliness for decades to come. Thank you to Councilmember Hudson for her sponsorship of this bill, the Speaker's office to the Sanitation Committee for their work on it, and to the Department of Sanitation for helping lead the way on this effort initiated by Commissioner Tisch, who's in the balcony right now, to celebrate this work, and continued passionately by Commissioner Lohan. I proudly vote aye. Thank you.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala. Banks.
Aye on all, except Intro eleven twenty-three A, I abstain.
Butcher.
Aye on all, and congratulations to Councilmember Wan and Williams on great accomplishments.
Aye.
Thank you.
I vote aye on all, except eleven twenty-three B. I'm abstaining, and I want to say why. I totally agree need to have containers on the street. It worked well in West Harlem, but they didn't pay anything. My concern is that if you are paying whatever it is, fifty-five dollars, to place the container, fine, but to have that money continue for that unit for the rest of the life of that unit, I don't think it's fair. I think, for instance, thanks to Councilmember Salam, when I got my container, I paid for it as a homeowner, and then I got a check from the city to pay me for the container. So I paid nothing for my container. So then why should co-ops and condos have to pay? They too are homeowners. So I think the concept is great, I know environmentalists think it's great, but why should that individual homeowner, co-ops and condos, pay for the rest of their natural life? That's the problem. Trash is supposed to be paid for by the public and not by the individual homeowner. So I abstain on eleven, eleven twenty-three B, and yes on everything else.
Brooks Powers.
Just a second.
Caban. We're gonna hold a moment. Councilmember Carr.
I'll be voting no on Intro eleven twenty-three B, and respectfully abstaining on LU's three nine eight and three nine nine with accompanying resolutions, and I on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all, except for eleven twenty-three B.
Felder. Okay, we'll come back. Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Holden.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Briefly. I, for the same reasons that Councilmember Brewer mentioned about the container, I don't agree with the fifty-dollar charge, which is, again, people are paying their taxes, they deserve to have, and they're doing us a favor by subscribing to this, so I just think it's, it's a charge I think is excessive. So I'm against eleven twenty-three B, and also LU three ninety-eight and three ninety-nine and accompanying resos. The, the large, over three hundred unit on the edge of my district, it's across the street from my district, the homeowners in that area have, have been against it for some time, and it's just going to put a, just a strain on the neighborhood, so I'm a no on LU three ninety-eight, three ninety-nine and accompanying resos. Aye on the rest. Thank you.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all, except abstain on eleven twenty-three.
Lewis.
Aye on all, except eleven twenty-three.
Mamarato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of eleven twenty-three B. No, I'm of, no.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
Aye on all, and no on eleven twenty-three B. I concur with my colleague, Galbraud.
Menon. Morano.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
As we meet here the day after Veterans Day, it could not be more fitting that this council is poised to pass a long-overdue measure to honor a generation of men and women who stood guard during one of the most perilous periods in modern history, the Cold War. For nearly half a century, American service members served in silence and vigilance. They didn't come home to parades or fanfare, they simply did their duty, deterring aggression, defending freedom, and preserving peace in a world that often stood on the brink. And many of these veterans live right in my district on Staten Island, and many live on fixed incomes, and this bill that we're poised to pass will help them stay in their homes with dignity, and it sends a clear message that New York City remembers their service. I want to thank all of my colleagues that are about to vote for this. And this legislation has a proud lineage, as Councilmember Carr indicated. It was first introduced by my predecessor, Councilmember Joe Borelli, a steadfast champion for Staten Island's veterans, and when Joe left the city council, David was, picked up the torch and carried it forward with persistence and heart. And our Veterans Committee Chair, Bob Holden, fought hard to make sure this bill reached the finish line, and I'm so glad it's passing before his time with us ends. I'm honored that one of the first bills I sponsored as a council member builds upon their leadership, and that together, we're about to make it law. I think it provides real property tax relief for Cold War veterans and their surviving spouses, and because of that, I enthusiastically vote aye on this and all of the other legislation except for Intro eleven twenty-three B, and LU three ninety-eight and three ninety-nine and accompanying resolutions, eleven fifty-one and eleven fifty-two, on which I vote no.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Brooks Powers.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Majority. While we have to reimagine how we deal with the garbage in New York City, we had to come up with something, even though I'm not fully in agreement for eleven twenty-three B, but we cannot have our street not being addressed with all the garbage shoring all over. So I hope it's a message for all New Yorkers to make sure that New York City is a clean city. Whenever I travel, I always envy how the other city function, so that's why I'm always taking nice pictures. So today... So that's why I'm always taking nice pictures. So today is a time for us to say no to garbage all over our street. And on that occasion, I want to say thank you on that one. On that occasion of veterans, I want to say Happy Veterans Day to all the ones that have served. Freedom is not for free. I have learned that from early of my age. I have to say thank you to all my ancestors that fought for the battle, Bataille de Vétière on Haiti, which has given us the freedom, all the blacks who was enslaved throughout the world. So my ancestors fought so hard. So I have to say thank you to all of them as well, as we celebrate Veterans Day for all those that came to United States of America to fight. So I want to say thank you to all of them. And for that, I want to say aye to all and raise the Haitian flag to say happy veteran to all my ancestors that really fought hard for us to have freedom, all black people throughout the world. So thank you.
Nurse.
I vote aye. And just wanted to thank everybody who's worked on this containerization bill, including Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, who about eight years ago couldn't stop talking about this type of project. So congratulations.
Osay.
I vote aye on all.
Palladino.
I on all, except for 1123B. Our co-op and condo owners are suffering terribly. And once local law 97 has now been in place and their maintenance bills have gone up as much as $300 a month, they do not need an additional fee to pick up their garbage. Thank you very much.
Powers.
I vote aye.
Wrestler.
Councilmember Butcher and I are talking about Haitian history. Councilmember Narcisse inspired us. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. I want to congratulate Councilmember Carr on a piece of legislation he passed through our committee to ensure that every community board and other civic groups are required to post their, government affiliated civic groups are required to post their bylaws on their website. It's a really important piece of legislation that I think will help us all have a better understanding of how community boards and other local institutions are supposed to be run. And I just want to express my strong support for the RAT Act that Councilmember Hudson has sponsored. You know, this legislation will help ensure that our streets are dramatically cleaner. And the city is taking on the overwhelming cost in installing this entirely new program for gathering trash. The expectation that co-op and condo owners are contributing a modest sum each year to help cover this expensive new program feels like a reasonable trade-off to ensure cleaner streets with fewer rats and better neighborhoods. And I'm really proud to support this legislation. I think that the model that we've seen in West Harlem has been highly successful. I'm excited that it's coming to Community Board Two in Brooklyn this next year, and I'm excited to see it expand across the city as a result of this transformational legislation. So aye on all. Thank you very much.
Riley.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca. I on all. Schuman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So I vote aye on all, but I want to say in terms of 1123B, it's important that we do containerization, and I know for my district how very important that is, but I also want to make sure I have a lot of co-op and condo owners, particularly folks who are older adults. I want to make sure when the rules are promulgated by the Department of Sanitation that co-ops and condos are not unduly burdened, and I will work with them to make sure that doesn't happen. So with that, I vote aye on all.
Stevens. Ong.
I on all.
Vernikov.
I on all, except no on 1123B. Thank you.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all, and I want to thank so many of the people who have been part of this team effort to get this project across the finish line. So of course, thank you to Speaker Adrian Adams, who has supported one LAC since the beginning, First Deputy Mayor Randy Masra, and former First Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer, the council land use team, Per Estrada, James Cottone, William Vidal, and Kawi, as well as the City Hall and DCP team, Deputy Mayor Delpho Carion, Nate Bliss, Lizatch Paro, Matt Petrius, Mitchell Baker, Hegyong Yang, and so many more staff members to organize labor, carpenters, the UNA, laborers, Local 78, 79, DC9, cement and concrete workers, our dedicated community boards, one and two, especially the chairs, Antol Ashraf, Evie Hansopoulos, our overlapping elected officials, Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez, Borough President Donovan Richards, State Senator Kristin Gonzalez, Assembly Member Claire Valdez, and Mayor-elect Zorim Mumdani, as well as our current Assembly Member, Zorim Mumdani. And last but not least, thank you to my incredible staff who dedicated countless hours on this project, my Chief of Staff, Nick Goloda, Laura Singh, my land use director, Ellie Lotterbeck, our land use consultant, Farah Salam, our comms director for this project, and previous staff members, Isaac Blazencine, Lily Zabios, Greg Castoria, and all of the interns, volunteers, and staff members and community members who volunteered hundreds of hours for this project. Thank you so much.
Zhuang.
I on all, except I want to abstain Intro 1123B.
Thank you. Felder.
I on all, no on Intro 1123B, and I abstain on Intro 1410.
Thank you. Areola.
Before voting, I just want to extend my condolences to the Brady family. Firefighter Pat Brady is a constituent of mine in the Rockaways. He is from a long line of firefighters, and we mourn him as a neighbor, as someone who represents the 32nd Council District, and I am mourned with the community, his family, and the fire department, his Chair of Fire and Emergency Management. And we pray for all our first responders. Therefore, I vote aye on all with the exception of Intro 1123B, for which I vote no. Thank you.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
Congratulating Councilmember Julie Wan for yet another model-setting example of how land use is done by this city council. Queens is doing it again. Congratulating once again my colleague in Southeast Queens, Councilmember Natasha Williams, for a phenomenal job on the Jamaica Neighborhood Plan, phenomenal work. This work would not have been accomplished without the input of our community, which we as a council firmly believe in. Also want to congratulate and thank Commissioner Jesse Tish for being here today and your hard work and your former role as our sanitation commissioner. Thank you for always being committed to the cleanliness of New York City. We appreciate you, as well as our sanitation chair, all the work that you have done, Councilmember Abreu, and Councilmember Crystal Hudson for bringing this legislation. I vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of introduction 1123B, which was adopted by a vote of 30 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative, and four abstentions, and LU's 398 and 399 and their accompanying resolutions, which were adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, two in the negative, and one abstention, and introduction 1410, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions. And one abstention, sorry about that, correcting the record. Introduction and reading of bills?
All bills have been referred to the committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into discussion of resolutions, and seeing no one signed up, I will move on to having a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution 1133 declares the first Monday of November as Black Solidarity Day in the City of New York. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 1134 declaring January 15th as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Day in the City of New York in recognition of the sorority's enduring service, scholarship, and positive impact on families and communities. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will, yeah, cheers. Thank you, Soros. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Brewer, followed by Riley, then Moreno.
Okay. So I want to talk about two bills that are on the calendar for today, for the future. One establishes clear procedures for determining the habitability of apartments rented through city FEPs. It streamlines the inspection and reinspection process by distinguishing between major and minor repairs, allowing landlords to correct issues quickly on-site. And another one, 1458, requires social services to respond to FEPs applications within 15 days, providing timely updates on approvals, denials, and information that's missing. Currently, DSS does not have standard timelines for application processing. And I wanted to want to thank everybody from Women in Need who made these bills possible. I also just want to mention another one, which is Intro 1460, with public advocate Jomani Williams, access to encrypted police radio. I get so many complaints, as I'm sure others do, from local media who cannot find information about events that are taking place in the neighborhood because there's no way to give their readers or their listeners information because they do not have access to that police radio as they have in the past. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley, followed by Moreno, then Dinowitz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce this legislation, joined by my colleague, Councilmember Farah Lewis, to invest directly in our city's young visionaries, ready to lead, innovate, and build something of their own. Intro 1473, the Youth Entrepreneurship and Business Development Program, or MYBE Initiative, creates a clear pathway for young New Yorkers ages 18 to 30 to gain hands-on training, mentorship, and paid experience that connects them to real businesses, excuse me, real business ownership opportunities, including city contracting. This program strengthens collaboration between the Department of Small Business Services, DYCD, CUNY, and others aligning our education, workforce, and business systems so that our young people aren't just entertaining the work, excuse me, entering the workforce, they're prepared to lead it. MYBE expands job readiness while opening doors for young entrepreneurs to turn skills into sustainable careers and community investments. It aligns with our city's MWBE goals and helps break barriers that have historically kept young people, especially in communities of color, from access to business development and ownership. I will also recognize the young leaders who helped me shape this bill, Aliyah Dwal, Joshua D. Udoni, Yanaya Campbell, Kayshark Saravia, and Arnold W. Liu Jr. They are the reason this work matters, entrepreneurs who saw a need and advocated not only for themselves but for the next generation they mentor and inspire. Investing in our young people will strengthen our economy and our communities. I just urge my colleagues to sign on to Intro 1473. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today, I am introducing a resolution that I believe speaks to one of the most personal and profound experiences any of us can have, the desire to start a family. Every day, I hear from New Yorkers who dream of becoming parents but are facing enormous financial barriers when it comes to fertility care. For many of them, in vitro fertilization, or IVF, represents their best or only chance at having a child. Yet, a single IVF cycle can cost as much as $20,000, and most families require multiple cycles before they're successful. Even when insurance helps, the out-of-pocket costs can be overwhelming. So the resolution that I've introduced calls on New York State to create a refundable tax credit to help offset those expenses. It's a simple, compassionate idea, one that would offer direct financial relief to families who are doing everything they can to bring new life into the world. It's not about politics, it's about fairness, dignity, and hope. Parenthood shouldn't be a privilege reserved for the wealthy. It should be a possibility for any New Yorker, whether they're a young couple, an LGBTQ family, a cancer survivor, or a single individual pursuing the dream of parenthood. So by adopting this resolution, I'm hoping the council will send a very powerful message to Albany and to every New Yorker struggling with infertility, that we see you, we hear you, and we stand with you. And it's about giving more families a chance to grow, to love, and to contribute to the next generation of our city's story. That's why I'm hoping all of my colleagues will consider signing on to this resolution. Thank you.
I love that. Sign me on. Recognizing Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I think all of us in New York City are looking for a fair shot at living affordably in our city, especially hard-working New Yorkers for whom we make legislation and programs. And we make, we have Housing Connect here in New York City. But sometimes we know Housing Connect isn't as efficient or streamlined as we need it to be to make sure New Yorkers are getting a fair shot. So today, I'm proud to introduce two bills that take important steps towards making New York City's housing lottery system fairer, more efficient, transparent, and accessible for the New Yorkers who rely on it most. The first is Introduction 1463. It requires HPD to build a centralized webpage within Housing Connect that allows approved, community-based organizations to assist residents directly through the housing portal. With the residents' consent to these trusted nonprofits that we fund in the New York City Council, we'll be able to help applicants complete forms, track their progress, upload missing documents, and receive alerts about available units that meet their criteria. The second is Introduction 1464, requires HPD with HRA to create a secure mechanism within the Housing Connect portal that allows public assistance recipients at their request to transmit their eligibility documents directly from HRA to their housing application. This will reduce redundant paperwork, prevent delays, and help families using public benefits move more quickly and efficiently through the affordable housing process. The goal is to create a better, fairer, and more efficient Housing Connect system. Together, these bills modernize how our city coordinates housing access, strengthening the connection between city agencies, community partners, and residents. They strengthen equity, improve efficiency, and ensure that navigating the housing lottery is not an obstacle but a pathway to stability and a fair New York. I encourage all of my colleagues to sign on as cosponsors to both pieces of legislation. Thank you, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Before we leave the chambers, we want to wish a happy belated birthday to Councilmember Lynn Schuman, whose birthday was on the 4th. Happy birthday, Councilmember Schuman. Thank you, colleagues. The stated meeting of November 12, 2025 is hereby adjourned.